The Chair Pro Tem for the reorganization meeting. This is an open public meeting of the Sparta Township Planning Board. Notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. The agenda is as stated on the agenda, and there are no new business or testimony to be conducted after 9:30, and the meeting will end at 10:00 PM. This is being livestreamed at HTTPS, www.youtube.com/spartatownship. And we will salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll just confirm for the record that the newly appointed members and reappointed members have signed their oaths of office, and they are on file with the Board Secretary. Congratulations, everyone. The first order of business will be the roll call. Please call the roll, Raisha.
Councilman Mark Scott.
Here.
Jeanette Burt.
Here.
Joan Furman.
Here.
Robert Bleke.
Here.
Brian Zimmerman.
Here.
Celeste Luciano.
Here.
Ernie Ragsat.
Here.
Robert Otto.
Otto, here.
Christine Dunbar.
Present.
Ron Day.
Here.
And the first order of business is the election of the Chairperson for 2025. I will now solicit nominations for the position of Chairperson.
Could I make a motion?
Mr. Scott nominates Joan Furman.
I second.
Is there a second? And are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Celeste Luciano.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
I'm sorry.
Okay, so there are two nominations, and the other nominations. There being no other nominations, we'll end the nominations and turn to the first nomination, which was for Joan Furman. And this is a nomination and a second for the appointment of Joan Furman as the Chairperson for 2025. Please call the roll.
Councilman Mark Scott.
Yes.
Jeanette Burt.
No.
Joan Furman.
Yes.
Robert Bleke.
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman.
No.
Celeste Luciano.
No.
Ernie Ragsat.
No.
Robert Otto.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar.
No.
Ron Day.
Yes.
So you don't count the alternates. I guess it's just... Unless there's a person... I guess there is one Class II person missing. There's no... So you count, I think, the first alternate, which was Brian, I believe. So what is the count when you count Mr. Zimmerman but not the second alternate, Ms. Dunbar?
Four, if we don't count the two alternates. For Joan Furman, four for yes, and...
You do count Mr. Zimmerman, though, I believe.
Wait, hold on, one, two, three. It would be four. Four for Joan Furman, yes. Well, no, one, two. Hold on, I'm sorry. Five for Joan Furman. And four for Celeste Luciano.
Well, no, what we're doing now is just the motion for Joan Furman, and only Brian Zimmerman counts on that one, not Christine Dunbar.
Okay, so...
So I believe that was four to five, if I'm not mistaken.
So it would be five for Joan Furman.
Oh, it was five, okay.
Yes.
One, two, three, four. I only have four.
Well, Joan Furman included would be five.
Did you count? Go state the vote.
Should we just raise hands?
Yeah, raise hands. For Joan Furman was... Okay.
Five.
Five. So the motion carries. And Joan Furman is now the Chair. So Joan, you please take over as Chairperson for 2025, and you will now do the motions for Vice Chair, Secretary, Official Newspaper, et cetera. Okay, congratulations, Joan.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion for Vice Chair.
I nominate Rob Otto.
I'll stick to the nomination.
Is anybody else interested in Vice Chair?
No.
Okay, so the roll call, please, for Rob Otto as Vice Chair.
Councilman Mark Scott.
Yes.
Jeanette Burt.
No.
Joan Furman.
Yes.
Robert Bleke.
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman.
Yes.
Celeste Luciano.
Abstained.
Ernie Ragsat.
Abstained.
Robert Otto.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar. Ron Day.
Abstained.
Did you call Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Okay. So you have five, five yeses, correct? Let's raise the hands again.
Okay.
So people who voted yes for Mr. Otto to be the Vice Chair, please raise your hands.
We have five.
Yes, there's five. So, Mr. Otto, congratulations, you're the Vice Chair.
Thanks.
And then, Madam Chairman, if you would now turn to the position of the appointment of Board Secretary and these remaining reorganization resolutions, that would be good.
Okay, is it... I'd like to, before I do that, to just give a word of thanks to Ron Day as our outgoing Chairman, who did a tremendous amount of work. And I don't think people realize it, it's not just chairing the meetings at the Planning Board, but he served as Vice Chair of the Master Plan... Or he serves as Chair as the Master Plans Committee, Subcommittee. And he was also involved in the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee. So a lot of hours really went into that, and we just want to say thanks.
Yes, thank you.
And I'd also...
Thank you, but I do want to say we had a great team. We're going to have a great team going forward, and it's a team that makes us work. So congratulations, everybody, for a great job last year.
And then I'd also like to recognize the outgoing members, because they also made great contributions. We have former Vice Chairman Bill Enright, Councilman Dean Blumetti, Mike Sylvester, and Justin Canalis. I also want to welcome the new members, Councilman Mark Scott, Robert Bleke, and Rob Otto. And before I end this, I also have to really give a nod of appreciation to Raisha, who has been working double, triple overtime in her duties. She came to the last meeting, walking pneumonia, mask on and everything, filling in for Dory Scott. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, appointment of Board Secretary, do I make that appointment or is it a nomination?
You seek nominations and a second, and then a roll call.
Okay, nomination for Board Secretary, please.
I nominate Raisha Franklin.
I second.
Thank you.
Can we do something, too, though? Let's nominate Raisha, but also Dory for when she returns, because I think Raisha is hoping Dory returns, is that right, Dory? And she does consult with Dory when Dory is able to consult with her.
Yes.
So it's sort of a, let's call it a, it's the appointment until Dory returns.
Okay, is that, that's what you want?
Yes.
Okay, so could you revise your motion, please?
So I nominate Raisha Franklin to act until Dory Fox returns.
Yeah, my second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Okay. Councilman Mark Scott.
Yes.
Jeanette Burt.
Yes.
Joan Furman.
Yes.
Robert Bleke.
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman.
Yes.
Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
Ernie Ragsat.
Yes.
Robert Otto.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar. Ron Day.
Yes.
Raisha, just one, mad, of course, now that we have a Chair and a Vice Chair, they vote last.
Oh.
Vice Chair, then Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I am looking for the official newspapers. Raisha, would you read them off, please, to everybody?
Sure. The official newspapers are as follows. New Jersey Herald and the Sunday Herald are hereby designated as the newspapers to receive notices of meetings as required by any and all sections of the Open Public Meetings Act, it appearing that those newspapers are most likely to inform the local public of such meetings. Tap into Sparta is hereby designated to receive courtesy electronic notice of meetings. The location for posting of notices of meetings shall be on the bulletin board in the main meeting room of the Sparta Township Municipal Building.
Okay, motion to approve the official newspapers, please.
I'll make that motion.
Les made a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sure. Councilman Mark Scott.
Yes.
Jeanette Burt.
Yes.
Joan Furman.
Yes.
Robert Bleke.
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman.
Yes.
Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
Ernie Ragsat.
Yes.
Robert Otto.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar. Ron Day.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. The next is the schedule of meetings. That was posted to the public. It will take place today, obviously, January 15th. The rest of the meetings will be on the first and the third Wednesdays of each month at 7:00 PM, with the exception of November. It will be November 15th and 19th. And for next January of 2026, it will be January 7th and 21st of 2026. Motion to approve...
Joan, you said November 15th, but I think you meant...
I have November 5th and 19th.
5th, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
19th, and...
19th and January 7th and 21st would be the only alterations.
I believe our reorg has to happen after the Town Council, is the Town Council reorg before January 7th.
Well...
No, I said January 15th.
Oh.
Okay.
January 15th?
This is January 15th.
Oh, next year.
Sorry, January 7th and 21st.
You can leave it as January 7th, and if the council doesn't meet until after January 7th, you can use the 15th. You have to do it after the council reorganizes.
Right. This is what was posted online.
And that should work for now. And it's good to state those dates, because then the public knows that that's about when you will reorganize.
Okay, motion to approve the dates.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I second.
Okay, roll call.
Which one second, Ernie?
I think Mark. Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott.
Yes.
Jeanette Burt.
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman.
Yes.
Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
Ernie Ragsat.
Yes.
Robert Otto.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar. Ron Day.
Yes.
Joan Furman.
Yes.
Robert Bleke.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is Executive Session, Resolution 2025...
Before that one, Madam Chairman, did you want to do the appointment of the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee?
Oh, oh.
That technically is your appointment.
Okay.
But one member has to be either the councilperson or the mayor's designee.
Yes. I believe it would be Robert Bleke, who has agreed to serve on that according to the ordinance. And as far as the rest of it goes, I'd like to do a temporary Minor Site Plan Subcommittee group until we... We're such a new group, many new faces, and I'd like to get a feel for what everybody's time commitment is, because it's not just the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee, it's also the Master Plan Subcommittee. So I'd like to reserve that till later, but I know we have a lot of business that we have to conduct for the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee. There are some pending applications we don't want to have to wait. So if we did a temporary appointment, Rob Bleke would be on by ordinance. I know I would continue to stay on. Ron, would you continue to stay on temporarily until we get our new group together?
I think it makes sense if I stayed on for like a month.
Yeah.
And then give someone a chance to see if anyone else is interested, that'd be fine.
And is there anybody who is interested we could put on at this time? If not, we'll have to discuss it.
What, just so people understand, the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee is a group of four people, serve as members of the Board, but they also serve on a very important mission and role of review of those things that are defined by the ordinance as minor subdivision and don't have any waivers or variances. And typically are businesses in town who are changing their location or going into a new location and doing some modest, very modest changes to the exterior facade and no site improvement, no changes to the land, and...
A lot of signs.
It's a lot of work, yeah, a lot of signage, a lot of work, but it's very good, because it's all interacting with the people that are doing business in town and trying to...
I heard Rob Otto's...
I said I'd like to know more, but I was asking if there's any impervious or land disturbance, and apparently there's not.
No.
Let me learn more, please.
None of that at all. So it's relatively routine. However, there are a lot of questions and a lot of answers that need to be obtained from the applicants.
I'd like to get one more person on, at least temporarily, to kind of learn the ropes, and otherwise we won't have an ability to transition.
Okay, fine, I'll do it, but temporarily.
All right, thank you. So the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee, temporary Subcommittee, would consist of Ron, myself, Rob, and Rob. And the Master Plan Subcommittee, I think I'd like to really wait and discuss all of that.
So now, Madam Chairman, you were... The next item was the resolution to go into closed or executive session pursuant to Section 7 and 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, that is to discuss matters of contract negotiation, the matters to be revealed to the public upon the completion of all litigation and repeals and the removal of the need for confidentiality. Is there such a motion?
Yeah. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
And the professionals will leave and go to the other small conference room.
All right, I would expect maybe what, a half an hour or so? You know, we'd ask everybody to just patiently wait outside for a while.
All right, Rajesh, would you put them on and let them know that we are back in session?
All right, Ryusia, would you put them on and let them know that we are back in session? We should take the break right before the public hearings, like get this done. Okay. All right, Ryusia, would you put them on and let them know that we are back in session?
There's a delay.
Professionals are in that side room.
I know.
Oh, you want me to go?
Yeah.
Want me to get them?
No, I got, I got.
Three minutes. Three minute break.
Can we get this part done? Then start then. Thank you all for your patience. I obviously was wrong in my estimation, but just want you to know that we had a very thorough discussion with regard to the reorg- second part of the reorganization, and we are ready to proceed. I know my colleagues would love to have a five-minute break, but they've waited so long. Can we get through this part and then have a five-minute break? Unless somebody really needs it, okay?
That's fine.
So, we're out of executive session, and we are on to the reorganization part two. Would somebody like to make a motion for the appointment of board attorney? And before I say that, one of the things in the resolution that we discussed, for any resolution that we come up with tonight, we would like each professional service contract to have a 30-day termination clause for any professional that's named.
I make the motion that we hire Steve Warner as our attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Is there a discussion? Okay, Ryusia, roll call, please.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
No, I don't know him.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Abstain.
Ernie Ragsat?
No.
Robert Otto?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar? Ron Day?
No.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Robert Bleakley?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. But I just want to say a couple words to Tom and thank him very, very much for all of the services he has been here for how many years? Forty? Forty-four? And has done a lot to shape this town. And appreciate the work that you have done for all of us here. And it's a small town, paths cross again. So, wish you well.
Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to serve Sparta. It's a wonderful town.
The next is for the appointment of conflict attorney. Is there a motion on the table?
Tom, you're still serving for the rest of the day today.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, we'd like you to continue through today, please.
Is that possible if we know that hearings are going to be continued?
Well, that's a question for the attorney.
That's, unfortunately, right now, we don't technically have one.
Well, I think you can make a motion to appoint, you know, people that made the motion to appoint Mr. Warner could amend their motion to confirm that their, that my term as a professional services contract is being extended until, well, you might want to make it extended until sometime when Steve can take over. I'm not sure what you're thinking of on that. I'm, I'm willing to serve, I'm willing to serve until you have a new attorney, if you want me to. So, that's, and my contract always said you can terminate, either party can terminate my contract on 30 days' notice. But I do, if you wanted me to stay, you should have some sort of professional services contract with me and my firm. So, is there such a motion to, to approve the continuation of, to approve a temporary extension of the, or a temporary contract with Mr. Collins and his firm until such time as the replacement is able to attend?
I make a motion that Mr. Collins' contract is extended until such time as Mr. Warner becomes available and his contract is signed.
Available is kind of a vague term, until it's signed.
Until it's signed.
That's fine.
Is that good?
That's, that works.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Do we need a roll call on that?
Yes, you do. It's an actual resolution.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Uh, Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Ernie Ragsat?
Yes.
Robert Otto?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar? Ron Day?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Robert Bleakley?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Tom. Tom, I just want to personally say thank you because that, that was extraordinarily professional of you and very kind of you, that you didn't need to advise the board in that capacity, especially since you were not at that point an active attorney for us. So, I appreciate that. I also appreciate you and everything that you've done for us.
Thank you.
I second that.
You're welcome.
Yes, I think we're all appreciative. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, thank you.
All right, is there a motion for the appointment of conflict attorney?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to nominate Dave Brady.
I'd like to nominate Amanda Wolf.
Is there a second for Amanda?
Second.
But we, what, what we had discussed and agreed to...
Was to have two.
Both, to have two professional services agreement.
So, I don't know if we can, if we can direct those? Or should, or should we package it as both? Package it.
I make the motion that we hire...
I'd make a motion that we, we have two conflict attorneys, Dave Brady and Amanda Wolf.
I'll second that. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Mark Scott?
There was one other, no, we don't need it anymore. I'm sorry.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Ernie Ragsat?
Yes.
Robert Otto?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar? Ron Day?
I'd like to abstain until I meet Amanda.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Robert Bleakley?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. The next one is for the board engineer. Would somebody like to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for Dave Simmons, Howard Pelham, the associate for board engineer.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Ernie Ragsat?
Yes.
Robert Otto?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar? Ron Day?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Robert Bleakley?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your many years of service as well. The next one is for the appointment of the traffic engineer. Motion, please.
I motion that we approve Neglia Traffic Engineering Consultants.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Robert Bleakley?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Ernie Ragsat?
Yes.
Robert Otto?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar? Ron Day?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And the last one is for the appointment of the professional planner. Would somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion for Catherine Sarmad, Sarmad Planning Group.
I'll second it. Okay, roll call, please.
Sure.
Councilman Mark Scott?
No.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Ernie Ragsat?
Yes.
Robert Otto?
Abstain.
Christine Dunbar? Ron Day?
Abstain.
Joan Furman?
Abstain.
Robert Bleakley?
No.
Can you tell us the count, please?
Yeah, how many yes versus no? I mean, you have several abstentions, but you just need the yes versus no.
Four yes, two no, three abstain.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
I want to say thank you for the appointment.
You're very welcome, and thank you for all of your service.
Appreciate it. It's a lovely board to work with, lovely town. I appreciate working in Sparta. I look forward to working together. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, if we can just make a motion to take a five-minute break, four minutes, if you can make it four minutes.
Four minutes. Make a motion.
I'll second. Call is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the 2024 Open Space and Recreation Plan Update Amendment to the Sparta Township Planning Board Master Plan. We did have a public hearing at our December 4 meeting, and many people did speak. However, it was noted that there was, I guess, insufficient advertising, so we decided to carry it forward so that if anybody else wanted to come forth and give input into the plan, you're welcome to do so today. So the public is invited to come forth and state your name and address. And Tom, do they have to be sworn in, something like this?
Yes, but I think you were previously sworn.
Yeah, I'm the environmental chair.
Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Noel. I'm the environmental chairperson who has been kind of the the Environmental Commission has been kind of behind the open space and recreation plan for the past year. So we're hoping that we can put a close on it tonight. But I did want to mention what the changes were from the October version that was previously posted for the public and given to various stakeholders to now, just so that everybody had that for their knowledge. I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'll just quickly summarize it. So any references to the 2024 Green Acres Grant for Station Park was removed. Any reference to the Rossi has been removed. The trail recommendation around Morris Lake was removed due to the Town of Newton protesting that the maps, the text, and the tables related to an addition of an open space trust fund block. It was block 9,001, lot 45. Anytime you're changing any amount of the open space, it tends to impact many of the maps and text. So those get updated all along with that. Finally, there was the addition of the Sparta landfill as open space, and so that also impacted many of the maps, texts, and tables that are in the back. So those are the major changes that were made. Just to quickly summarize for anybody who maybe is new, we have 24% of preserved land. This is not all owned by Sparta Township, and it's not all preserved directly through land trust. It's a variety of entities that own it as well as ways that those properties are protected. It does make some recommendations. Again, these are recommendations. They're not mandates necessarily. One is a recommendation growing the parks and also park improvements such as restrooms, dry, dog parks, et cetera. Trail connectivity, which there's several different places where we could connect to the larger trail system up here in Sussex County. Preserving some farmland. We do have six farmland properties that are preserved, but there are three additional ones that are would be up for consideration. And continuing to ensure that our wildlife corridors, there are many large mammals such as coyotes and black bears that do use the corridors here in Sparta to connect to the rest of the Appalachian area. Maintain water quality and native plant landscaping. So those are just at a high level, some of the recommendations in there. Hopefully, I know our professional who did author this document cannot be here tonight. She had a medical emergency. Urgent, not emergent. And so hopefully, we can answer any questions you do have. And I'll do my best to do that, and hopefully, we can move forward with this being approved tonight.
I'd just like to say thank you for all of your hard work on this, and it was a wonderful experience, meeting with everybody and going through this process. So we thank you for that. And if anybody has not read this yet, it is posted on the Environmental Commission website, correct?
Uh, no, it's on the township website.
Oh, township website, okay. So please read it. It's a wonderful document. And I would like to entertain a motion to approve this with the changes that Noel had just mentioned.
I will make the motion to.
Madam Chairman, did we
Yes.
Did we open for any other
Oh, I'm sorry, anybody else.
testimony or comments or questions?
Oh, sorry.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eric Bernstein from the law offices of Eric M. Bernstein Associates LLC. I'm here on behalf of the Town of Newton. I realize that the letter that we sent on behalf of the town may have been entered into the record. We want to again remind the Town Planning Board before it takes an action that the township's comments made in the letter we presented to the then-chair and the board still apply. We do not believe it should be within the purview of the township to impact upon or interfere with Morris Lake or any of the public properties that the Town of Newton holds as it relates to your open space plan. And we would advise you all, hopefully, and I, Mr. Collins is still your board attorney from what I gather, will advise accordingly on the impacts that any open space change may have on the town's properties. Thank you. I'll answer any other questions as well.
I have a question. Have you submitted any additional properties beyond those that were I think the Environmental Commission had already pulled out Morris Lake. I think that was just mentioned. So are you concerned about any other access?
Any and all of the properties, easements or the like owned by the Town of Newton.
Okay. So but you haven't specified any future access issues beyond what exists at present.
We are unaware of any future access issues that may exist depending upon the impact that the plan will have.
Okay.
The town is not going to speculate on what may or may not happen.
Okay.
The fact that you've taken Morris Lake out of it doesn't address all of the town's concerns.
So I would just kind of speak for myself, but I don't think this town can blanket issue any anything where we would be open to entertaining any future access issues that you may desire to have. I've asked if you have any any present or future that you know of access issues, any maintenance expectations beyond what you currently own, and you don't want to speculate. So to me, that would be giving up your opportunity to tell us about a future access issue that may present itself. Is that correct, Mr. Collins?
No. I'm fairly certain that all access language and mapping of Newton land was removed. So I don't think there's an issue any longer, and to talk about the future access, that's like not controlled by an open space master plan.
Right.
So I don't think you're saying the same thing that Mr.
If I can just.
I don't think that you're saying the same thing that the town attorney of the Town of Newton is saying. I think you're saying something that is in the future. He's talking about the present document.
Okay.
There's nothing, that document was revised by Barbara Davis.
It sounded like he was asking for future concessions.
Don't think so.
Okay.
No, you heard something I didn't say. We're dealing with what's here, what's now, and what's at issue. What happens in the future is what happens in the future. I can't speculate on what additional access easements or additional access may occur going forward. We can look at what is in existence now. If Mr. Collins's representation is accurate, that all of the Newton property has been removed from the plan, not just Morris Lake, but all the access easements, then the town will be satisfied once we see the plan accordingly. If it does not, then obviously, our comments made in my letter of December still apply.
Yep, I heard it was removed. Thanks.
It was removed, and it is on the website. So you, did you look at the latest version to confirm?
We did not look at the latest versions to confirm because frankly, we have not really received any information other than by hearsay as to what was or was not in the plan. So I'm, if I'm going to, you've been advised by council, and you're advising me that you've taken everything out of the plan, we will reconfirm it once the board has adopted the open space plan, which you have not done as of yet. And if that is the case, that is fine. If that is not the case, we'll address it accordingly.
I know some of the concerns in the letter were that you had access to do repairs and all of that, but we did take the Rossi out of it. But I would encourage you to make sure the letter is sent to town council as well, so they are aware of it if they do in the future determine to do such a thing.
And the letter that Mr. Bernstein wrote to the planning board is part of the record of this hearing. So thank you, Mr. Bernstein. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to be heard? Please.
Sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And please state your name and address.
My name is Gary Tonkovich. I live at 740 Houses Corner Road in Sparta. And I just have what I hope and think is just a very simple question. Looking at the preserved land maps, there's numerous categories for preserved land, and they're all pretty much self-explanatory. There's one, though, that I was hoping to get a little bit of clarification on, and that category is open space dedications. There's several blocks of land that have that designation for it. The report didn't really go into definitions, at least that I could find. So in Googling that, there was a legalese-type definition of that term, which something to the effect of it's a mechanism by which municipalities can compel a property owner to keep land as open space. My question is simply, is that the Sparta Township definition of open space dedication for a parcel of land?
Noel, are you able to address that?
Kim, if you want to, Kim.
Kim.
Or Tom.
Do I know what Sparta's formal definition of open space dedications is? No. But the tax code or the deeds associated with these properties, that's typically how that's in that deed. So I don't know, that would be one we'd have to research if we.
Okay, again, do you know whether it's a voluntary thing?
Yeah.
That they can rescind?
Oh, no, 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 they cannot rescind.
Oh, okay, so they are compelled to retain this as open space?
Often, the dedication is actually to the township of Sparta, sir, and the map shows those properties.
Right.
And the listing lists them by lot and block, and the tax records show that they've been dedicated to the township of Sparta. Sometimes they are dedicated by a subdivision that has been recorded. Sometimes they are dedicated as an easement, as part of a site plan. So they are township-controlled lands, and they are dedicated to open space. The dedication part is that they are dedicated to open space.
So still privately owned?
No, most of them are actually publicly owned by the township of Sparta. It happened as a result of subdivisions and site plan ordinances that provide an incentive to property owners who subdivide their property and take advantage of the incentives in the zoning, particularly the RR zone and the PDRM 2 zone. And as a result of taking advantage of the incentives provided for in the ordinance, the developer was required to donate or dedicate open space land to the township in conjunction with those subdivisions and site plans. It's a very, very creative technique that was utilized by Sparta, and has resulted in almost 1,000 acres of open space that the township owns and controls. So that helps you understand.
Is this a zoning, is that considered zoned? Is that a zoning category?
No, it's actually, it's actually a true open space dedication to the township.
Okay, so it cannot be rescinded?
That's right. Cannot be rescinded.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Any other comments or questions about the open space plan? There being none, the board could close the public hearing on the master plan amendment. Chairman, Madam Chairman, is the hearing closed on the master plan amendment?
Are we not voting on accepting?
You are, but the hearing is over now for the master plan amendment. It was two nights, if not three nights, actually.
I make a motion to accept the.
You don't need a motion. Let's close the public hearing. Chairman, let's close the public hearing now. A motion to approve the resolution approving the master plan amendment of the I'm sorry, the open space and recreation update of the master plan of the township of Sparta. Is there such a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Otto moved it. Who seconded? Celeste seconded, and a roll call for the resolution.
Councilman Mark Scott.
Yes.
Jeanette Burke.
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman.
Yes.
Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
Ernie Backstat.
Yes.
Robert Otto.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar. Ron Day.
Yes.
Joan Furman.
Yes.
Robert Bleakley.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, finally. We'd like to welcome NPS Properties, Property Holdings to the dais, please.
Joan, I'm going to have to reach you.
Okay.
If the board would like, we can just come back and I think we can all present the whole application. And the board would like, it's entirely up to you. It's just I'm going to get started, and then I just feel like.
Well, we have a half an hour, you know, so we may as well get started because I'm not so sure, you know, with the bookings, when we could have you back. And we will have to be carried, and Raisha, if you could like kind of look at the calendar and see what we have, where we can fit them up next.
We have three applications set up already for February 5th, the next meeting. So probably we will maybe be able to squeeze them on for the second meeting in February or the first meeting in March. But we already have three applications on, which two were carried for February 5th meeting.
So maybe, okay.
Welcome. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Daniel Bankendorf from the law firm of Askin Hooker representing.
Yes, Mike.
Yes.
Hello, hello. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Daniel Bankendorf from the law firm of Heyman, excuse me, Askin Hooker in Sparta, New Jersey. I'm here this evening to discuss NPS Property Holdings. You may know them as Nicolac, paving stones and retaining walls. Here on their behalf is Nino Nicola. Nino, if you can raise your right hand and be sworn in by Mr. Collins.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
No.
And please state your name and spell your last name and give us an address.
Roberto Nicolaia Jr. N I C O L I A. Would you like my home address or the address of the corporation I'm representing?
The address of the corporation is sufficient.
640 Muncy Avenue, Lindenhurst, New York.
Could you just speak into the mic as well, please? I don't know if the other one is working.
Hello?
640 Muncy Avenue. That's M U N C Y. In Lindenhurst, New York. All right, so we're here this evening to discuss a property located at 9 Park Lake Road, Block 16003, Lot 7, formerly Block 26.06, Lot 5. Currently, it is an undeveloped lot on a 1.855 acre lot in the ED zone. And this application is a nearly identical application to an application that was before the board back in 2020. That application, though, provided for four tenants and also provided for four tenants and also provided for, one second. Oh, it provided for very little landscaping. So something we wanted to make sure that this application did was accommodate the landscaping or as close to accommodate the landscaping requirements as we could. My client purchased the property in 2022, thinking he was going to be able to build the building that had already been approved, but by that time the application itself was not extended, and there was no work done to the property. So we're back before the planning board with an amended site plan and the following variances. We have an impervious coverage calculation. When the plans were submitted to the board, there was 51% impervious where 40% is permitted. But that is going to be reduced a little bit. We were able to go back to the drawing board and change that. We also had a lot area parking ratio of 33%, where 25% is permitted. Again, we'll have the engineer provide variance testimony regarding to that to meet those standards. And there are dock doors on the building. Generally, there's only five dock doors that are permitted. We have six. And again, there's a landscape ratio. When we got this application initially and looked at it, there was less than 20% of landscaping. If you've ever been over to that area, you'll notice there's nearly no landscaping on any of the lots over there. There's just retention basins to accommodate the impervious coverage and no real landscaping. But we're hoping to bring that closer to 31%, where 40% is required. And then there are three waivers specifically that we're requesting. There's 20 spots, parking spots that we're requesting where 36 are required. There's a parking aisle requirement of 24, where we're providing 23. And there's parking spot size. We're requesting nine by 18. We're nine by 20 is required. I think it's important to learn a little bit about my client's company and what they're intending on doing with the property so that you better understand why we need the space and how we're going to use that space to better the community as a whole. So we'll start off with, there's going to be absolutely no outdoor storage on this site. Okay, that's the first thing. I know you hear. Okay, that's the first thing. I know you hear Nicolac Paving Stone and retaining wall block, but I want it to be clear that there's gonna be no outdoor storage. The only thing you're gonna see outside are the HVAC units and the, and the dumpster, which again, the engineer will provide testimony to. The applicant is currently operating in an almost identical building, so he knows that it is of sufficient size for his purpose. The purpose itself is the building will be used to store and market their higher-end implements for their stonework, so grills, pizza ovens, those types of things. What, generally what happens is a retailer, like, will say Wingle will come to the property to look at a grill that they might want to sell. In their showroom, there'll be no direct sales to clients from this site. So Wingle will come to the site to look at the grill. They will maybe have some training regarding it. There will be no propane or hazardous material kept on site. It's just to show them how to use it. And then they'll be delivered either from the site or, you know, directly from wherever they have their implements outside of Sparta. One of the big things that I really need to get across to the board is that there, there are generally only two clients parked on site at any given time. That is it. They really don't have people coming and going without making appointments for them. Yes, general public could stop by to look at something, but that's not what they're doing here. That's not their premise. And then at most, they're gonna have four employees. So we're looking at six parking spots that will be used at most, according to my client and his current use. In addition to that, there will be two to three truck deliveries per day. Generally, they will be box trucks, but there will be approximately three tractor-trailer trucks per week that will deliver. So maybe of those two to three deliveries, one of them might be a tractor-trailer truck or maybe two in one day, but generally, they don't use tractor-trailer trucks. More fuel, it's not worth it, so they use box trucks. Again, these are smaller implements for Nicolac. Deliveries will be staggered, so that trucks are not parked outside waiting to be unloaded. They will get there, they will be stopped, and they will be unloaded, and then they will leave. They will not sit there overnight. And that's why they're gonna be staggered, and they're gonna be scheduled, so that we don't have to worry about that. Again, I, I referenced that there's no hazardous materials on site. So, Nino, you've heard my representations made this evening. Do you accept that as your testimony and how your business currently and will run on this site?
I do.
That was, that was great. I'm glad we got through that.
Before we get to the professionals, can you just state the operating hours?
Yes, the operating hours will be from 7 to 4.
I'd like to turn it, is that all you have?
That's all we have. Otherwise, we would, we would bring up the engineer, and then we would bring up the architect, so that you can see it. The building's gonna be beautiful. I have the plans, I can show them, but I can't provide testimony, and I can't ask my client too much about them.
So I don't even know if the professionals have questions for the owner, as opposed to there's no.
I think it would be difficult, yeah.
Site plan or anything to look at, but.
No, and I'll save those questions for the other professionals, once they do provide testimony. I did have one question related to kind of the operat-, well, not necessarily operations, but just, I know this is an amended site plan from a prior approval. You'd kind of noted that there was some differences to the application. Are you aware if any of the testimony you provided about the operations of the site, like the no outdoor storage, the amount of deliveries, the number of employees, you know, the parking situation, is that greatly differing from what was testified to before?
It, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I can't provide testimony to that. I can only look at the resolution, and it did provide for storage, outdoor storage.
Okay.
And it, and it provided for four tenants, potentially four tenants. And there was literally no landscaping on the site, so. And I think when you see the plans, you're gonna be like, yeah, that's a true benefit to the town.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Dave, anything?
Madam Chair, I would respectfully wait for the applicant's engineer at the next meeting to go over most of my comments, because I think he's gonna have the information to address them directly.
Anybody on the dais? Can we start down here, or I think it's just a brief introduction?
Yeah, I think, once we get into the thick of things, I, I might have, have more, because I think my questions either may be answered by the professionals or, or moving forward, yeah.
Yeah. Very good.
Well, I'd prefer to wait for the professionals as well. I don't know if you want to give us a little discussion on the variances, specifically the, the parking lot aerial extent and the impervious cover variance?
Yeah, I should, I should wait for, I should wait for the engineer. I'm sorry.
Ron?
Yeah, I've, I've just got two general questions. The first one is, you know, when I, when I reviewed the package, it shows a, a building of 11,880 square feet, I think it is. But that does not, I don't believe that includes the second floor, or there's the.
That is correct. And one of the things that the architect noticed this evening was that very issue. So he's going to have to go back and rerun the calculation to determine if there's going to need to be a sprinkler system or if there's gonna need to be a firewall installed or something, some accommodation.
So it's basically a 13,000 square foot building.
We agree. Yep.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
The other, the other question is, can you just give us an idea of, there is some showrooms or display rooms? Can you give us an idea of what, what they'll be used for and who will be visiting them?
Talk about that?
The, excuse me, the showrooms are generally set up where we'll, we'll display multiple different barbecues that we sell. We represent multiple brands. Those will be set up. The only people that'll really be coming to see it will be, as everything we do is business to business, if we're taking on a new customer or introducing a new product line, we'll have a scheduled appointment where that customer can come to our showroom and meet with our, our sales manager to go through the features and benefits of the products that we're displaying, to kind, to kind of show it to them versus, you know, bringing it in a box and going through it that way. Just present it in a professional setting. Yeah.
So did I understand it correctly, so it will be potential retailers who will get the product from you? Will, will?
Correct. The, the businesses themselves will come to us.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Nobody else? All right, I guess then we'll have to.
Great.
Carry it to.
Maybe the second, can you do the second weekend in February? I know Ken's gonna have a problem.
What are the dates that you can possibly do?
I think it was February, February 19th, right, Raisha?
Yes, Tom, February 19th.
And how many do we have on that day?
So far, I believe we have two applications on February 19th.
Okay. Does that work with you to be?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. The sooner the better.
Dan, if you can, please confirm that you're extending the timeframe for action until the end of February 2025.
I am.
Thank you. So the NPS application will be carried without additional notices to the February 19th, 2025, meeting of the Sparta Planning Board at 7:00 PM at this meeting room.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Planning Board Number 686. Collinier, oh, would you please ask Mr. Zimmerman to come back in?
Yeah. He has to recuse for this.
Yeah.
Did he leave with him?
Huh? Did he leave with him?
No. I was just recusing. I just didn't know he kept all his stuff. He may have left. I think he left.
I think I did too.
No, no, he just recused.
No, no, he's out.
Oh, he's back.
Out here.
I'm just cynical. I know.
He did. He picked a better.
We thought you left.
Okay. Collinier, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing it. Machine and Design Inc. at 11 Wilson Drive in the ED Zone asked for an extension of approval for preliminary and final site plan and see variances of these approvals from the board. They were previously approved and are just asking for an extension of time. Tom, would you be able to provide a little more background? Did they ever cite a reason for the extension?
They did submit a letter, and the attorney explained that they're just requesting extension of time from the board approval. He didn't give a great deal of reasons in his letter. If you'd like to have them come in, you could have them come in. Actually, it's Madison Hooker, I would think, a woman attorney. I think it's John Urson's client. And I, I don't really remember this one too well. I think maybe they were. Dave, do you remember Collinier's business?
Basically, one of the standard-type buildings over on Wilson Drive in Commerce Park. Nothing.
Is it customary to just give automatic extensions, or do they usually provide a reason?
Oh, it's, it's normal to ask the way they've asked. They, they, there's no, you know, there's no prohibition against asking. If you'd like to have them come in, you can have them come in.
Leave it up to the board.
I, I, just as a suggestion, I guess I'd like to just understand what it is, what the variances were, as well as just a, just a better feel for what the approval was before, you know, giving approval to extend it. So I, I think it'd be worthwhile to bring them in, hopefully to a quick, a quick discussion, at least, at least we understand what it is that we're approving.
Raisha, could we squeeze them in on, in the first meeting in February?
We have three applications that's being heard. It's, it may not be possible that they will get heard that evening because of the three applications that we already have on the agenda for the first meeting in February on the 5th. I don't recommend it because of the three applications in which two of them are a carry. We want to make sure we have the time dedicated to the ones that are already on the agenda, especially the ones that were carried over from December meeting.
My concern here.
Oh, that might be, that might be possible, though. That, I believe, Raisha, isn't one of those Mr. Urson's application for firehouse apartments?
Yes, that's correct.
And he's there anyway for, he's coming anyway for that, so I think you could slip it in with that.
Yeah, let's try, because it does have time to act.
This one doesn't.
Oh, no, this one does not.
Yeah, they, there's no deadline. But I think Mr. Urson could do both, or try to do both. That's up to the, whether he finishes or not, I don't know, but he's here anyway, so. So I think Raisha should be instructed to ask Mr. Urson to explain the Collinier request at the February 5th meeting. It doesn't seem impossible.
Would you kindly send a letter and notify them?
Yes, I can send them a letter. I can actually email Mr. Urson.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Okay, next item are updates from Town Council, Environmental Commission, and any of the subcommittees. Mark, you're representing the council. Do you have an update?
I have no update today.
Okay. Christine, could you provide an update from Environmental Council, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you. Yeah, the Environmental Commission did have its first meeting of the year. And at that meeting, we looked at briefly the permitting that is going to take place through, for PSG&E with their transmission lines. And that is through the Dubois and Associates. And they're going to be working on all the power lines in Sparta in terms of maintenance and repair. There were, at that meeting, five people that attended that were concerned about the Environmental Commission being removed from having a vote to the, the planning board, so. And there was one person that suggested that the role of the Environmental Commission be elevated in some way. A report from our representative on the Master Plan Subcommittee advised us that they reviewed the survey, and they focused on discussion of the seven focus groups. So we were interested in, in learning about the survey. I don't know when that's going to be released. Then we're also going to need to renew the certification for our green team. So that will be coming before the Town Council, I believe. And also, we need to keep working on our bronze certification for Sustainable New Jersey. One thing that is nice to mention, to kind of keep all of our boards and commissions together, is, is that we are having our quarterly speaker series. And everyone, of course, the public especially, and everyone on our boards and commissions are invited to attend the lead awareness presentation. That will be on February 13th at 7:00 PM. And on March 13th at 7:00 PM, this is before the Environmental Commission meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, there's going to be a presentation on Plant This, Not That. Yeah, to get ready for the spring. We are planning on another Earth Day celebration at the middle school because of the tendency towards inclement weather and around Earth Day, which is the 22nd of April. So we're going to hopefully secure a date of May 3rd for that at the middle school. And we also discussed several resolutions and ordinance ideas that we're working on. Just to mention a couple, one is, I believe, Buffer Zone, Lake Mohawk. Chapter 25, environmental regulations, no, no mow. The promotion of pollinator gardens, native shrubbery, and to encourage certain types of plants that are beneficial, that are natives, of course, and also a native plant ordinance for municipality properties and also for residential properties. We're also working on the, a resolution that's called the Green Amendment for the Future, for future generations. And there was, we're also educating ourselves regarding the artificial turf that's full of the PFOS, and a resolution on that. And also, for the Sustainable New Jersey, there is a land use pledge that's a priority action that we're looking into. That's about it. So we're busy beavers.
You are.
It's a lot, one meeting.
Joan, I have a question for you. Where is the, that lead presentation?
It's going to, all of the, we're having four presentations. We've already had a couple, and they're all going to take place at 7:00 PM when we have the Environmental Commission meeting. And that's on, here.
Here.
Right here, and that's on the second and fourth Thursdays of the month.
Thank you. Really nothing, is there anything from the Master Plans Subcommittee?
So, scheduled to meet tomorrow night. I'm not sure if that's the right thing to do right now with all the changes. I'll leave that to you as the, as the chairperson, so.
Why don't we postpone that?
And then, and then you can.
We have to get a group.
Everybody, I'll give you the names of everybody on the subcommittee.
Open space cannot be incorporated into that?
The open space is kind of, sorry to jump in.
Secondary.
It's, 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 any element of the master plan can happen on its own. Like, so the housing element, fair share plan will happen on its own. This is more the comprehensive master plan that'll, that'll capture, you know, more than just an element would, more than just a focal area, and may include another element like the land use element or something as part of it. But it'll, it'll touch on all of those things. So it'll basically absorb what was done for the open space plan, but not be a full element within the master plan.
Okay.
Okay, and as we said, the, we'd formed a temporary subcommittee for the minor site plan, and we'll get that busy in the next day or so. We don't have any resolutions. And so the next thing brings us to comments open to the public for matters that have not been on the agenda and matters not related to a hearing on an application for development. Does anybody? have anything to say? Welcome.
Rick Finkel, 13 Hayward Road. Not sure if it's on the agenda or not. It's sort of a gray area, but I have two questions. One is, Newton was here and made some comments about they don't want us messing with their property. I don't really understand all the background, but I find it interesting, because when we had the flood and washed out the Glen, I thought we were pretty cooperative with Newton to help them get back up and running. So I'm not sure what the, can anyone make a comment on their lack of cooperation?
I just, I want to add, because I was trying to, the Morris Lake is the, the water supply for Newton. They have a series of pipes and engineering that supplies that water, so.
It was right through the Glen.
So there was a discussion about basically, don't put any encumbrances on the land that we own. And so my question was directed at the lawyer who, the intent is not to put any encumbrances on the land that they own, but as you know, with the Glen flood, and there was a lot of cooperation, and I understand that, if in the future, there were, some other pathway would need to be established, some other method of conveying that water would need to be established, if we had designated that space in such a way that it would be encumbered, I was simply pointing out that Sparta cannot possibly forecast what lands may or may not be utilized for some future engineering in the hypothetical future if something happens. But if the lawyer had an idea and wanted to discuss it, that I was trying to tell him, let us know which parcels that you'd want to, you know, that you would be concerned about, but it sounds like they don't have anything specifically, so I, I don't, I didn't want anything to get in the way of our adoption of an open space for the benefit of Newton Township. But I understand that they are going to be sensitive, and rightly so, about the waters that they rely on to supply their community, just like Sparta would be very concerned about their waters.
The same partnering town and neighbor, that, he seemed a little firm on his comments and didn't seem like a very strong partnership there. Just an observation. My real question is, there was an abrupt changing of the guards with the attorney, and we weren't sure about when the new attorney was going to come. And it almost looked like it was going to happen tonight. But I think both the board and Tom both mentioned, there's a minimum of 30 days. So even if the new Warner guy was available, can you make that change that quickly? Would you pay out his contract?
Not a minute.
When he's available.
It's when he's available. It's not a minute.
Might be available next week. I don't know.
Yeah, then if he is, then he will, he will take over.
But I thought you required 30-day notice.
No, my existing contract for 40 years with Sparta has provided, and with all municipalities provides that I may terminate, or the client may terminate on 30 days' notice, and that is something I stand by and I'm prepared to do for the rest of my life, and my firm is to, so.
The contracts had all expired as of December 31st. So right now, there was no contract.
By the end of January, we're expired anyway? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
All of them.
Yeah, to carry over to the next person anyway, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Vivian Perlmutter, Morgan Drive. I, I just have a, a question of how things are done. This last applicant needed variances. I thought that variances went to the zoning board. I don't understand. You're asked to approve variances.
The, the planning board, planning boards throughout the state of New Jersey have the jurisdiction to hear all C variances that are in conjunction with a subdivision or a site plan. Okay? Every planning board. And then the zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey have the authority to hear D variances, Section 70D variances that are in conjunction with, of any kind, and that are in conjunction with a site plan and subdivision, in which case the whole subdivision or site plan goes there. And zoning boards also hear C variances, like for a single-family home on Lake Mohawk or something like that, that are not in conjunction with a subdivision or site plan. So it's, that's a, that's a basic summary of how that municipal land use law authorizes the two boards to have two different jurisdictions.
So it, it.
We don't talk about that case because that's.
Well, I'm not allowed to talk about those cases, but the, it, they were justified that the zoning, the
Planning Board.
Planning Board can decide on these variances.
That's correct.
And they do it all in one vote, or can they separate it out that they?
It can be separated out, but it's generally speaking, all, a subdivision and site plan, generally speaking, is, is done primarily as one vote, because if you don't get the variances, you can't have the site plan, so.
They can't modify it. Okay, thank you.
No, they, they can, it's discussed during the hearings. You decide that during the hearings.
Okay, thank you.
Would anybody else like to comment? All right, hearing none. We'll close the meeting to the public. And the next thing we have is another executive session through Resolution 2025-1, Attorney-Client Privileged Communications.
So Madam Chairman, that would be a motion, and I don't think we'll have be, having any decisions made in open session after the closed session, but that's up to the discretion of the board. So, so it's a motion to approve the resolution to go into closer executive session pursuant to Section 7 and 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act to discuss matters of attorney-client privileged communication. Is there such a motion?
Make a motion. A second. Okay, and as, as just mentioned, there, there probably won't be any decisions today. It's just discussion.
We need a, we need a roll call of the vote, please.
Roll call. Thank you, everybody.
Do you think it's locked, Rasha?
Uh.
Is the door locked?
Uh, not yet.
It shouldn't be locked, okay. We have to take off the signing.
There, now we're live. When Yesh is back, we're live. Wait for Rasha. In case there's anybody out there. Ow. That hurt?
All right, we are back from executive session and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A second, that.
Everybody's anxious.
Yep.
Motion that never fails.
Who made the motion? Ernie and...
Ernie makes the motion, I second. It's usually the way it goes. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.